Wonderful, thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. Good to see you all. Kelly Lynn, can you please stop me with roll call?
Mr. Andreessen.
Good evening.
Mrs. Briscoe. Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan.
Here.
Mrs. Oost.
Here.
Mrs. Tonney.
Here.
Mrs. Zlinski.
Here.
Okay, before we rise for pledge allegiance, I'm calling in audible. After pledge, we will be listening to the kids. Because you guys are all here, and we're happy to have you here tonight. So we're going to do the pledge, and then we're all going to listen to you. How does that sound? Let's do that.
With us tonight, we've got our, uh, two of our music staff, Ms. Clifford and Ms. Snyder. And they are going to take it from here. Dr. Johnson's not with us tonight, so she had a very nice presentation or introduction, and the teachers are going to take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw. Um, so tonight, our eighth grade orchestra students are going to perform "Going to Boston", arranged by Carrie Lang Grusell. To our eighth grade students, the song means perseverance and overcoming adversity. They first encountered this song last year for the Lincoln Way Orchestra Step Up Night, and were floored over how fast the piece went. And a lot of the students standing here weren't able to play at performance tempo. However, as that, we have a tradition where our eighth graders pick a piece to perform on their last concert. Our eighth graders chose to try again, and really showed their improvement, and made this piece one to remember. Six of the current students performing tonight were a part of the junior high's first orchestra program. So, to see how far they've come is really a testament to their hard work and dedication. And our other students who joined a little bit late showed just as much hard work and dedication, and I'm so proud of all of them. Here's "Going to Boston."
Actually, I've got, if you guys can go tight for a minute.
Yeah.
I've got coffee cups for the folks, and candy and little cookies. Wanted to give you guys a nice little gift tonight, and then, uh, take some pictures for the parents. Since you guys are all holding instruments, I'm just going to set this here so you can grab it on the way up, because it's a nice little thing we could share with you guys tonight, if that's okay. And if we can all turn around and face the parents, we can all take a picture together.
I need to get a picture with you and the other students.
Hey, why don't we invert this? So, my ones to the back.
Somebody wants to be a doctor.
(Laughter)
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 All right, one, two. There we go. And then if any parents want to take pictures, I will get out of the way.
Thank you guys for coming out tonight. It was wonderful to have you.
(Laughter)
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 The parents, as exciting as that was, the board needed really exciting afterwards.
So, if you want to stick around, there's popcorn and soda in the back to talk to this show. One, if you want to stick around, you're welcome to. If you have other things you'd rather do with your children, we absolutely understand. But, thanks for coming out tonight, hold on a second.
Yeah.
Thank you for helping with all the, uh, the treats and...
Thank you.
Yeah, what's up? Hmm? Oh! 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 I'm sorry.
Wonderful. That's all check.
I was just having to do the kids. That's all check. What's going on today?
(Laughter)
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 All right, um, so we have three performers right here who participate in our symphonic band at Mokina Junior High. Um, these students also participated in this year's solo and ensemble contests in several different entries, um, both solos and in ensembles as well. Um, this year Clayton was selected to participate in the ILMEA Junior District Festival back in November, which was a very tremendous honor. Um, today, they will be performing Brigadoon, which is a type of Baroque-era dance written by Henri Purcell. Yep, that was it.
(Laughter)
Thank you guys for coming out tonight.
It's awesome.
And, uh, you know, sometimes we do a little music in our day, like...
Nice to have you.
How long you guys been playing?
Um, four, five years.
It's pretty nice.
All right, one. Wait, wait, wait. You go ahead.
(Laughter)
Yeah, I remember you in the theater. Yeah, we got to get your camera ready. Come on now.
All right, one, two. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you guys for coming out. Very, very appreciated. Thank you. Here, hi.
(Laughter)
Between science fair projects, art, stories, and music, it's nice to see that. And some of those kids have been playing since fourth grade. That's great. Okay. Okay. Yeah, what's up? Totally fine. Thank you. Okay, public communications. We've got a couple tonight, and I'm going to try really hard to read the names. Some are easier to read than others. That's okay. Uh, Michael Kraus. Hi! Would you like to come up here and share a few nice things with us tonight? Come on over.
Uh, my name is Michael Kraus. Uh, I am the Mokina 159 Music Booster President. Uh, I heard the music boosters mentioned at some previous board meetings. Uh, there were some questions about what we did, how much money we had. Uh, and since it was a musical-themed night, I thought I'd come up here and kind of give you a overview of what we did this year, and what we look forward to doing in the future. Uh, as a mostly new board, our main goal this year was to establish what we hope will be an annually-repeating list of fundraisers, events, scholarships, and grants with the teachers. So, as you'll hear, with some adjustments to our outgoing costs and some small increase in revenue, we think that we can come to kind of a stable, repeatable, predictable list of events. Uh, we've prepared a document available to the public for anyone interested in everything we did this year. I left a copy over on the desk with a QR code. If anyone wants to scan it, it'll bring it to you, and we'll constantly keep that up to date with everything we're up to, what we spent, how many hours we volunteered. So it's totally transparent. Uh, I'd like to use kind of the rest of my time to just talk about some of the major things we did this year. Uh, since we did spend fifteen thousand dollars on the kids this year, uh, let's see, we gave six thousand dollars in scholarships. Uh, he doesn't know yet, but one of the students playing here has won at that, won the award. So, don't tell him, he's going already. Uh, so we did six thousand dollars in scholarships. We did something new this year where we spent two thousand dollars to buy recorders for the new incoming students at MES. So we want new students getting interested in music, so we paid for that. Um, let's see, we do like the winter parade where we hand out hot chocolate for the kids. We did several grants for a movie night for the choir, where they got to go see Wicked. We paid for that, the private screening. Uh, let's see, we did a field trip for the orchestra. We did a field trip for the band to the planetarium. Another field trip for the band to go see a concert, Star Wars-themed. We do the coffeehouse events where we show up and we provide snacks. Um, and we did something new this year where we did a backdrop with balloons at the spring concert for the eighth graders, so the parents had a nice photo backdrop, since our students were dressed up, and it's a chance to get some nice photos. Uh, it was used a couple times. We used it for some other events afterwards, and it stuck around. Uh, we look forward to helping with the summer parade, and, uh, some of the fundraising events we traditionally do are the Dippin' Dots events at the school. We did four of those, uh, at MES, MIS, and MJHS. We're going to be selling Dippin' Dots again at the Color Run upcoming. Uh, we did the Iggs Mum Music Contest. Uh, we did the concessions for that, and I believe they're going to try and do it again next year at MJHS, so... Um, and then we did the Step Up Nights concessions. All in all, we brought in about ten thousand dollars, uh, ten thousand five hundred dollars, and we spent about fifteen thousand, so we're operating a little negative. But we think with some tweaking to that, we should be able to kind of keep a pretty stable, um, list of events that we can do year after year. So we hope that we at least can do a field trip, some event for each group. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Bye.
Yeah. (Inaudible).
Okay, I'm going to talk really fast. Um, I come here tonight to express my congratulations to first the elected seated board members in their new roles, as I watched the meeting, last meeting from home through the link, which by the way, I do appreciate. Over, over any political race, it's never easy. I know firsthand how stressful it is putting yourself out there is not fun. I'm proud to be a Mokina resident, I'm proud that my children graduated, and soon-to-be from 159. I am appreciative of Jim's statements for commitment to better address the cracks within the board, to be more of a board that work together rather than against one another. I'm here tonight to continue to advocate to keep the special services as close to a high priority on your list as possible. Many of you know me as a parent, but also as a vocal, local advocate on my concerns for special service students in community. I may not currently have a child in special services today, but my son is an alum of 843 when he was a student of 159 in a program much like the STAR program we have today. Just like a few of you board members who also no longer have children in 159, you still care to be a part of a great district and volunteer your time to make things matter. But for special needs parents like us who advocate, who bring concerns to the forefront, we try to do them without having to do the upper chain of command, without having to bring others in, without mentioning on social media. Advocating is mentally draining, emotionally heartbreaking, and physically never-ending. I will address something recently mentioned that was pertaining to the bathroom situation at MES for special services students who are not toilet-trained. I know it was brought up here, and it was debated, and I can see both sides. However, being a special needs parent of a child that was, went to school here particularly between the years of '07 and 2010, I will share that in those days, he was not potty-trained until the age of eight and a half, and did lay on a table in the bathroom with no privacy gate. But I do believe the teachers and paraprofessionals did their best to protect his privacy, but there was no cone at the entrance of the door, there was no privacy screen to protect his dignity, or any sort of sanitary paper laid on the table for him to lay on. I hope me speaking about this will allow some level of understanding the frustration. Let me go back to my reference in terms of being emotionally draining, mentally heartbreaking, and physically never-ending, because some of those concerns of advocating continue this day for me, and I will carry on for the rest of my life until my death. Us families always are told that we should not take things personally, and should, and that we can't get fully charged when our advocating doesn't go the way. And I agree, I do believe in grace, I believe in compromise, so I can only hope moving forward with the elected board members that are, that serve 159 schools specifically under special services, continued efforts allow for families to speak up without the feeling, being made to feel that we are the bad guys. You must understand, we just want simple, fair, and to be advocate for our children for the best chance of academics and social inclusion and/or acceptance. I love the fact that when parents spoke up about the enrichment program, that group had the support from the board that it did. They came as a group, supported one another, and were consistent in their efforts. The response from the board was prompt and caused action to take place and made things happen. This is just simple acknowledgement, research, and solutions that the board made happen to accommodate, nothing different when it comes to special service families speaking up as well. The difference is, the group was persistent, never gave up. And for us special needs families, believe me, we are tough like nails, but we have a lot on our plate. Uh, research, uh, I'm going to fast forward because I got one second. I was excited to see the additional teacher, staff, and the special services department. I'm ending. I was ex... Can I just have ten more seconds? I was excited to see how well the Young Athletes Event turned out. Families showed up, celebrated the child's experience, pure joy and inclusion. My daughter was an NHS member, came home and said how much fun she had. I thank you for your time, and please ask for you to remember that nothing is shared tonight is personal. I know we are all doing our best, but please understand this statement, that if you're not in my boat, you can't seem to know what us parents go through. Mokina has phenomenal parents, teachers, and we are a great district. Let's just be leaders and proactive rather than followers and reactive to situations. I promise things will be so much smoother over time. Thank you.
(Applause) June, I'm, I'm not trying to push. Whitehead.
Whitehead.
Yeah.
That's me.
Come on up.
I definitely will.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yep. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Okay, uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf of the bus drivers. And, uh, the reason I'm here is number one, the number one priority for a bus driver is to bring the students to school safely and get them home safely. And that is not an easy job, I'll tell you that right now. Okay? And, the other thing is, is number one, okay, uh, regarding Mike, okay, I've known him for quite a long time, and he has done a real good job of getting his students to school and back home safely. The other thing is, in the incident on his bus, there was no protocol written regarding a situation like this. So, he acted what he felt was the best way to react in regarding a critical situation of a student that had to go, and, and, and young kids are not supposed to hold their urine, all right? So, he did that, and, uh, I, I, I would like to kind of say that he did a very good job in regarding that. What I would like you to do is, I'd like you to take all information and consider what should be done. Okay? And that's all I ask you. I want to thank you very much.
(Inaudible). I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Come on up.
Thank you, everyone. So, I'm a father of the U-Patil, um, and Mr. Mike was the bus driver. And whatever the incident happened that day, um, well, I really appreciate what Mr. Mike did for my daughter. Um, she wa, she want to go for pee, sorry, my English is not that good, but, uh, she want to go for pee very badly that time, that day in the, in the bus, and she was literally crying, and then Mr. Mike asked, uh, to my daughter, like, "Why you asking?" Whatever the happened. So she says she want to go for pee, and Mr. Mike request to one of the parents in the middle of the, uh, stop, and, uh, he request that can she go use the washroom to your home? And, uh, she, she let her go. So I really appreciate what Mr. Mike feel my, my daughter pain at that time, and he take care of the situation. Because even as a family member, if I need to take care, or if I need to ask to someone middle of the street, uh, even the familiar member, I feel so sigh, or I feel weird. But he did it as a, like, I feel like he did as a, as a grandpa of my daughter. I, I really appreciate whatever he did it, uh, at that time, you know? Uh, well, he, he feel pain of my daughter, uh, you know, in, in the bus, uh, at the time, you know? Otherwise, uh, no, no one is, is there with my daughter, uh, from the family. But, but whatever he did, I, I, I salute to him, I really appreciate it. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Brendan Burns.
Hello. Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen on the board. My name is Brendan Burns. Uh, I happen to be Mike Burns's son, and I also happen to be the only attorney in our family. Uh, I appreciate everything that the board does. I appreciate your role in the education of, uh, children. Uh, in our family, the lineage runs deep. I had a grandmother who was a crossing guard. Several members of my family have been principals and teachers, and so, we're, uh, as far as the school system goes, um, it's something that means something to our family. I would not be standing here before you today if my father let a child off of a bus to strangers. My child let a, let a young girl who didn't just have to go to the bathroom or raise her hand, who was crying she had to go to the bathroom so bad, that as a grandfather, a father, a bus driver, and a human being, showed her the dignity and the respect to not have to go to the bathroom on herself on a bus. We all know the prevalence of bullying, of shaming that goes on in school, particularly in today's day and age. What would have been the result if she had to go to the bathroom on herself on that bus? My father refused and made what I consider the right decision. With regard to that decision, as I stated, there was a teacher from the middle school standing right outside of his bus, that he spoke to and explained the situation to, and she thought it was the right decision to make, to allow this girl off the bus to use the restroom. Because this teacher was the, was the mother of boys, she was standing next to her friend and next-door neighbor, who was the mother of girls, and thought it would be a better decision to allow this girl to use the restroom at a household with women. These were not strangers. They were a teacher in your district and a parent. Someone my father would see frequently when he dropped the kids off, okay? After this happened, it's my understanding that the school implemented a policy that did not exist before, where now that children are instructed, "Be advised, you will not be able to use the restroom, uh, while you're on the bus. So please, if you have to go to the bathroom, go before you exit the school." That policy was not in place prior to the incidents that are referred to in the board's April 22nd, 2025 letter. Additionally, following the incidents referred to by the board on the April 22nd, 2025 letter, um, a boy was forced to go to the back of the bus in a garbage can and urinate. I don't know if his parents know about this, I think it's deplorable, and I hope for his sake, he's not bullied in class by his students. Regarding your letter, it's dated April 22nd, and I would just appreciate one more minute at a time. It's, it's dated April 22nd, 2025. It was received by my father thereafter. His pay was terminated on the 21st per the letter. A decision was made, and he was given no due process to contest or give comment on said decision. Furthermore, the letter states that his pay would be suspended, and he, he, he would be suspended until the next board meeting. There has been no communication since, and not even the attorney for the board will respond to me with regard to that issue. In terms of the fact that he wasn't just suspended without pay until the next board meeting, or the next board meeting, or the next board meeting, and here, and here we are. I would, I would respectfully consider you to consider human dignity, and in that circumstance, what would you do, given the fact that there's no particular policy in place specific to the word on this? And support of my father asks that you reinstate him, beginning tomorrow, with back pay by Friday. Thank you.
Those are all the public comments. Regarding information reports, a couple things, a little different tonight. Public reading. One, information reports are public, they are shared in advance. We received them almost a week ago, all three hundred and forty-eight pages of them. Questions were answered, some answers that are not pertaining to action items tonight are still in process, but they are being handled. Um, for tonight, as we are working through this, we will not be reading individual information reports as we normally would. In general, that being said, we are still going to go with the committee updates for the people that are in this room, and then we'll proceed on through the list. Sam, would you like to start us off with the finance committee update?
Okay. I apologize, my voice has been in and out all day. Um, we had the finance committee meeting on May 12th. At that meeting, we did the ad hoc committee recommendations, we went over that. This isn't on?
No.
Um, we also went over the ONM Fund, the transportation, and the amended budget. And next up is September 8th, we will go over the current year budget. Did I miss anything, Dr. Shaw?
No, I think you got it all, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to, in Lincoln, if I just leave this on, is it giving you feedback or anything? So you were saying people couldn't hear the other one?
Yeah.
Oh. And I, and I thought it was on, that's weird. My, my, the other mics normally pick me up. Oh, well, that's okay. Julie, do you have anything you would like to share, or we can put a pin in this until later?
Um, the only thing I would share is the press issue 118, um, that, that was released, and there was a webinar. Um, I will get you further information and send that to the board.
Okay.
Um, we'll probably have that as information next month with action the following.
So info in June. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, as far as superintendent, Mr. Stein, uh, I know information was shared in advance. Um, none of that is for action tonight. Did you have any additional notes to add to that at all? Probably not.
For Mr. Stein?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, fair enough.
Excuse me, Jim, can I ask a question here?
No. Um, we will not be doing that tonight. Your additional questions have been asked or answered in advance, or they are welcome to be shared, uh, via email to follow up with. But tonight, due to a lack of certain people in the room, I am trying to extend every courtesy to the people that would normally be here, so they can give us straight answers on things. And I will ask for your respect in that wish.
I'm sorry. Um, my question-
I'm sorry. My question is not for Steve Stein, who's not here. My question is is really for the board. We we have an agenda here that we have had for more than 10 years and we have systematically had discussion after each agenda, each topic, I'm sorry, on our agenda. And this is a complete surprise. So we, and you've quoted this multiple times, that we have a policy, which isn't a policy, but
I'm not talking.
We have an agreement that there are no surprises amongst the board. And what you just said is a absolute surprise to everybody sitting at, maybe, maybe not everybody. But for me, it is a surprise, number one, that we're not reviewing all the items on the agenda, is my understanding. And number two, the board, this is our one meeting a month, our one meeting that these topics are going to be discussed on our agenda. And now it's my understanding that we have no room to discuss these because someone made that decision before the board meeting and did not involve all board members in that decision. This is our meeting, not not one person's meeting. So can you respond to that?
Yeah, I was really trying not to talk over you. There's been a situation today and you're aware of it and you were emailed about it and it was discussed. And the people that would normally talk about their information items, which are again, are only for information, there's no action tonight, are not in this room. So I am streamlining the meeting out of respect for the people that are not here. I never said question, uh, no, I was kind. I asked for respect earlier. I asked for patience and I communicated that with every single member of this board this afternoon. And these are not for action tonight. They're not. So anything that's for action, we've had well over a month to research it, to ask questions about it. But Steve's not here and we will proceed because he can't answer questions when he's not here. All I'm asking is if you have questions, feel free to submit it to them so we have that information and reply before we have to take action. No one said he can't ask questions. I am clearly dealing with the situation as it's presented to me. I sent all of you an email about that this afternoon and I please asked for your kindness and courtesy and you were given a phone call about that too. So I I have asked for help and I would like that help.
Okay. So I we did not discuss the fact that we're going to
That
Well, we
I'm not arguing tonight. This was discussed.
Okay, but I could just speak if if
You can be wrong as much as you want. Be my guest. This was shared in writing and on the phone.
We, there was nobody that told me we were skipping over all the items except, so let me ask you this. Is Dr. Shaw going to, Dr. Shaw is here. Is Dr. Shaw going to give her her report? Lincoln Henson is here. Is he going to give his report?
Their information items, they are shared in advance.
This this is on our agenda. The board has not agreed that we weren't going to discuss anything on our agenda. The board did not agree to that. And you're asking that we we, of course, I understand Steve's not here, so we're not going to ask Steve questions. But Terry Shaw is here, Lincoln Henson is here, so why would we skip over everybody? I don't understand that.
A majority of the people are not here. I never said you couldn't ask questions. I said they're not here, so please submit them in writing. That is what I said.
Okay, so, okay. So I want to go on record with a couple things. And one is
It's not a discussion item, Kelly. We're moving on. Thank you for your help.
No, I would like to go on record.
Kelly, Kelly. There's a lot of things going on here.
Point of order, it's my turn right now and I would like to go on record and say that on May 16th, because these things that are on our agenda are not going to get discussed, I want to say two things. One is, on May 16th, I sent an email to the superintendent and board outlining serious concerns about the amended budget, its compliance with GAAP,
The amended budget is not on the meeting.
The lack of transparency regarding, we, it is on, it is on the information item Dr. Shaw is presenting. We are supposed to discuss this. It's on our agenda.
I haven't even gotten to that part of the agenda yet.
And right now, I'm talking, so I'd like to finish. I have concerns about its compliance with GAAP and the lack of transparency regarding our deficit position and over budget expenses and financial controls. Specifically, 37 budget items exceeded 100% of their 25, of fiscal year 25 allocations.
No, we're moving on. This isn't even part of the agenda.
Excuse me, you cannot interrupt me. Point of order.
No, no, point of order. This is
Mr. Andreessen, I would like to please, per IASB guidance, ask that Kelly not to be allowed to continue since it has already been asked and answered and she has not given, been given the floor.
I would like the public to know that I sent these emails
We are moving on.
And the public should FOIA my emails if you want to know my concerns about the custodian contract up for action and the amended budget up for action. I have two emails where I detailed
Kelly, you can either enjoy our meeting or you can leave. These these questions, these things you're doing are, they're they're not, they're they're inaccurate for starters. They're inflammatory at worst. You showed up to a finance committee meeting 40 minutes late. You left before a special meeting. And then you have the gall to make accusations against people that have spent their time working on things without any evidence, without any thought. And quite honestly, that's not fair to our staff. So, quite honestly, that's not even part of the agenda right now. I ask for some grace as people are not, when people are not here and I want fellow board members to be able to ask their questions. And I fully said, send them an email. Send an email. That's okay. It's not for action tonight. Questions are fine, however, they're not here and I am trying to find a workable solution in a challenging situation. That was shared in writing.
Terry Shaw is here.
I I am moving on. I am moving on.
And two emails.
Kelly, Kelly, we are moving on. This is not your show. We are moving on. Do you have anything in addition to your previously written, public, shared, asked and answered report that you previously already received and replied to? Is there any additional information you would like to share tonight?
My board report?
Mm-hmm.
Just, just some things, like, information item for tonight is summer painting. It'll be up for approval next month. We'll have the detailed list. Mr. Ron is still working on that detailed list to say exactly what's going to be painted. Our HR department's in full swing with our open enrollment meetings. Includes our, Brittany needs to make the most out of her last few days with with Ann before Ann's retirement. Our action items tonight, we've got some donation from Andy's Custards, custodial contract, our Port District IGA. Those were all written about. There is a very detailed memo regarding the custodial contract. There is no difference from last month to this month in the Port District IGA and the donation was anything over 500 estimated value of like $950.
Great, yeah, which was very kind of them. Okay. Thank you.
So can we discuss Terry Shaw's report?
For the ser- serious, for the sake of brevity, I'm going to treat everybody the same. And I am going to ask for any additional questions to be submitted in writing so they can be reviewed and that's what we're going to do tonight.
This this is our board meeting and we should be discussing the topics on the agenda.
And the public
I want to go on record saying that.
You know what? We already have and we appreciate you sharing your thoughts, but quite honestly, you were advised of this earlier today.
No, I was not.
Okay, that being said, I actually, I can, but that's okay. I care that everybody's here. I care that you share your thoughts, but sometimes when things happen, I appreciate your grace as we were trying to find a workable solution. I'm not telling you it's perfect and I need help and you're welcome to make suggestions later, but I'm trying to be fair to the people that are not in the room and I hope people can understand that. That being said, everything, all 348 pages were shared in advance. There is no new information that's being voted on tonight that's in their information items. Let's be very clear about that because it's not. Lincoln, do you have anything additionally you would like to add to your report? I believe everything was there, including the function in the budget of where the Chromebooks were officially aligned.
Correct. The question was answered. I don't have anything further to share.
Thank you for your help. Good report.
Thank you.
Lincoln, can we ask a question about the
I I have asked and answered that procedure already. Anna, would you please help us with Lincolnway Special Education?
Yeah, there really isn't much more to report than other than the celebration, our meeting's next week, so end of year celebrations are will really be reported next month to you guys. But for finances, we're still, you know, we're still in line with the budget, which we've already discussed. This includes bus drivers and bus monitors as the largest lying items. These are due to increased transportation ridership and more students requiring the support of bus monitors for safe transportation. And the addition of the bus monitors is driven by IEP, IEPs. That's it.
Okay, thank you. FOIA requests, we had two of them, they were asked and answered. We are on to action requests. Would anyone like to start us off with the approval of the previous minutes? Before, actually, you know what? Go ahead.
Okay, I move to approve minutes from the April 16th, 2025 regular meeting and closed session meeting and the April 28th, 2025 special board meeting as presented.
You, Kelly Lynn, when you're ready.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
No.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
I know it's tight. I I wasn't keeping track.
Oh, it was 4-3.
It was 4-3, okay.
So 4-3, it failed, so now we go back to
So now, so now, the amended motion failed. We're going back to the previous motion that's on the table. That's fine. So we are now voting on a motion to approve 1 through 9, all as one package. That's what we're doing here. Kelly Lynn, when you're ready.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of course you can. Go for it.
It's unfortunate that I'll be voting no. I wish we would have just separated it out so I could explain better that we would have just appreciated. It wouldn't have changed the vote and we would have been allowed to vote in favor of the other decisions, but now I'm left with having to vote no overall and it's a shame that we could have just given each other professional courtesy, given it a four out, but I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else before we vote?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I also will be voting no because we are including the three new maintenance workers in on this personnel report. And the reason that I'm voting no on hiring these three people is included in the email I sent to the board and the administration detailing the 10 reasons why I am not in favor of this combined proposition. The estimates for the cost of bringing three maintenance workers in-house is underestimated and there's, and it's flawed. And the committee, based on what is presented to the board, did not present any long-term cost evaluations of the financial impact to the district. The district is in a financial deficit and basically hiring these three people in-house versus outsourcing is essentially paying more for the same thing. Right now, we get these three people via outsourced contract. What we're doing here is hiring three new people and accepting the rising costs of employees, which, you know, the the cost of having an employee escalates higher than than CPI, which is the comparison. And so anyway, I urge the public, if you're interested to know the many reasons why So how can we do that now? We can have the maintenance staff, the three new hires separated out from the personnel report.
You would make a motion to accept items, and you can number them any way you want, you just wouldn't call five, there'd have to be a second, then there'd have to be a vote, and then five would be held as a second separate item. If that's what you want to do. If anybody has a different idea, I'm all ears, try and be fair to everybody.
Okay, so I make a motion to remove item five from the Personnel Recommendations Personnel Report action item into a separate action, so...
Okay, this has been seconded by Julie, so just to be clear, there's a motion on the table to deal with items 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, and 9, followed by a second vote for five, five will still be voted on just separately. Is that a fair summation of your suggestion? Okay, you guys ready? Anybody want to discuss that since it's on the floor? Kelly Lynn, let's go for it.
Mrs. Oost? Mrs. Tunny?
No.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Because we're voting to remove or to not remove.
No, 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 let's just be clear, and that's okay, point of question, it's all good, it's all good. So as of right now, there's a motion on the floor to approve everything except five. So if you wanted to vote for everything else right now, you'd vote for five, and then we're going to do five as a secondary vote.
Right, so her motion is to amend my motion.
Correct.
We have to vote whether or not we're going to amend my motion now first, before we vote on that.
Sounds fine. So you want to vote no to approving the amended motion?
Correct.
As long as we're on the same page, that's fine, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, Mrs. Zalinski?
No.
Mr. Andreessen?
No.
Mrs. Briscoe?
No.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
I know it's tight, I wasn't keeping track.
It was four-three.
It was four-three, okay.
So four-three, it failed, so now we go back to...
So now, so now the amended motion failed, we're going back to the previous motion that's on the table, that's fine. So we are now voting on a motion to approve one through nine, all as one package. That's what we're doing here. Kelly Lynn, when you're ready.
Okay.
Yeah? Of course you can, go for it.
It's unfortunate that I'll be voting no, I wish we would have just separated it out so I could explain better that we would have just appreciated, it wouldn't have changed the vote, and we would have been allowed to vote in favor of the other decisions, but now I'm left with having to vote no overall, and it's a shame that we could have just given each other professional courtesy to put it out, but I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else before we vote?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I also will be voting no because we are including the three new maintenance workers in on this personnel report. And the reason that I'm voting no on hiring these three people is included in the email I sent to the board and the administration detailing the 10 reasons why I am not in favor of this combined proposition. The estimates for the cost of bringing three maintenance workers in-house is underestimated, and there's, and it's flawed. And the committee, based on what is presented to the board, did not present any long-term cost evaluations of the financial impact to the district. The district is in a financial deficit, and basically hiring these three people in-house versus outsourcing is essentially paying more for the same thing. Right now, we get these three people via outsourced contract. What we're doing here is hiring three new people and accepting the rising costs of employees, which, you know, the, the cost of having an employee escalates higher than, than CPI, which is the comparison. And so anyway, I urge the public, if you're interested to know the many reasons why I'm not in favor of this, I urge you to get a copy of my email that I sent to the board yesterday and the administration. This has been a back and forth for months, questions remain unanswered, and the financial implications just simply aren't complete and accurate, and, and still, it's still coming up with a higher cost in a deficit position for the same thing. So that's why I'm voting no.
Thank you for sharing your opinion, I do not believe other people share it, and I do not believe the facts in the case prove it out based upon what I've seen. But thank you for sharing it. So, that being said, motions on the floor. Any other comments before we vote? Let's go.
Mrs. McMillan?
No.
Mrs. Oost? Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Before we go on to the next item, we do have the ability to go to closed session for discussion if that is the will of the board. If that is the will of the board, I would like someone to make a motion for that. Okay, at... Oh, no, we, we will in a second. I'm, I'm just making the motion official because I wanted to make sure people, I knew what people wanted to do. So here's what I'm going to suggest. At 7:55 PM, I am making a motion that the board go into closed session for matters of personnel to return, there will be action on, on items after going into closed session. That is my official motion, would someone like to second it? Okay? Any discussion? Okay, Kelly Lynn, please.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Okay. I will ask everyone to clear the room, we will be going to closed session. I'm going to give us a five-minute break, at which point we will be going to closed session to return time, time around. We are on action item D, would someone like to make a motion? Okay, this has been first, anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
Okay. Before we vote, you know what, no. No, let's, let's just do it. Kelly Lynn, on you.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush? Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Okay. Cessent Agenda 7E1 Disposal of Equipment. I move to approve the disposal of materials and equipment as presented. Any discussion? Kelly Lynn?
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Okay. 7F, would someone like to make a motion? Okay, any questions? Okay.
Mrs. Zalinski? Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe? Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost? Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, Social Studies Program. Okay, any questions?
I just have a discussion, I mean, because we didn't discuss it earlier. I just want to thank everybody involved in, in coming to this decision. It was a lot of work, so thank you, Dr. Johnson and your, your group that, that did that work.
Okay, anybody else? Well done. Kelly Lynn?
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost? Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Thank you. H Custodial Contract. First and seconded, any questions?
Yes.
Julie, go, go ahead. I, I know you said something, she was in my sight first, go ahead.
I had a thought that I was going to, to say, but I'll just summarize and first thank for being on the committee to, to look at the issue. I, I, I know that there was a lot of time spent on it, I, I just don't happen to agree with the conclusion of this and the recommendation. I shared my, my feelings on that via email, and it's also kind of hard to vote on things when questions aren't answered, so I, you know, I, I hope that we can inch toward a better solution on, on getting some answers, but I'll, I'll just leave it at that, and you have to discuss it, and I apologize I didn't get your, your, your call earlier.
Okay. Kelly, yes?
Okay, so I just want to say one more time that I emailed the administration and the board yesterday detailing the 10 reasons why I believe that board should delay the approval of the custodian contract to HES. The concerns outlined in my email include why, how we justify not going with the lowest bidder, how we are negotiating after the bid package, after the bids were received, to remove key requirements of the bid package without approval from the board, like removing the performance bond, the board didn't approve that, and we didn't allow for rebidding. There is a lack of transparency and unanswered board member questions. As recently as Friday, Julie and I submitted, I think, 15 questions regarding this action item, and none of them were answered. In the board consensus, this process, that the majority of the board has to agree with the question in order for it to be answered, and no one agreed that any of those 15 questions on this action item, I shouldn't say no one agreed, I should say the majority of the board did not agree that those 15 questions should be answered or any of them. There were flaws in the cost estimates, I think they were understated, and we are already in a deficit position, we're paying more for the same service. The three people that we are currently outsourcing will become employees at a higher cost. And we are, basically have not addressed any long-term cost implications of this decision. The rising healthcare costs, the pension costs, that this is a long-term decision, and the cost analysis presented is for one year, not a compounding financial analysis. I urge the board to pause this decision until the issues are resolved, and I want the public to know that these concerns are of public interest, and I urge members of the public, if you're interested, to request a copy of that email from the administration to fully understand those concerns.
I would like to take a moment to thank my two fellow board members who spent months working on this project, and two fellow admin people that are sitting right next to me, also we're got, Dave Rana, I know he's not here, but he spent a lot of time, and if I'm missing anybody, I apologize. Oh, you are welcome to, I would love to hear from you.
We're not hiding anything at all, Kelly, there's nothing hidden, it's all here in the board packets. Dr. Shaw presented it at the finance committee meetings. It may cost us a little bit at the beginning, because the health insurance rates, whatever, but in the long run, when we don't have to pay another company to come fix things, because we have our own maintenance people in-house, that's going to save us money in the long run. You are a finance person, you're supposed to know how this kind of stuff works. And so I don't understand why you keep coming at Terry, and then you accuse all of us on this committee of being fraudulent and tightening things, and I don't appreciate that whatsoever. There's nothing hidden at all, it's all here. Dr. Shaw presented it, and I don't appreciate your accusation whatsoever.
Can I respond?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm not accusing anybody of anything. Um, it's my turn now, it's my turn now.
It was in your email.
It's my turn now, are you done, or?
Not going to let you see, you can accuse anyone.
Are you done talking, and is...
It depends on what you have to say.
You, okay, we should not be interrupting anybody when they're talking, so I would like my chance to talk, I did not interrupt you. Okay, so number one, I did not accuse anybody of anything. Number two, my concerns in my email, as the public has a right to see, are factual, and they are based, as I am a finance person, and they are based on finances and accounting. And we are in a deficit position, so any extra cost is of grave concern. And in the long run, these costs are compounding. The cost of having an employee on staff is rising at a higher rate than CPI. Dr. Shaw can attest to that, CPI is at 3%. Our healthcare this year raised 15%, Anna. So that equation, just in one year, doesn't match up. So when you say, in the long run, it's, it's better, it's not better, it's not better. The, the work of the committee was not provided to the board. Julie and I asked 15 questions, they were not answered. It is a factual statement. We submit our questions, the board has to agree to what questions get answered. Anybody who wants to see, the questions were not answered, that is a fact. So nobody's accusing anybody of anything. I'm saying that I would like the board to revisit this and not vote on it because I question the legalities even of the bid process and the negotiating. I mean, there are so many things that are outstanding, those questions were not answered. So there you go, I'm not accusing anybody, I'm not coming after everybody, I'm doing my job, is what I'm doing.
Accusing people around this table and openly throwing out words like "legalities" when our own attorney has reviewed things is honestly a disservice to the people around the table, and I, I really don't like that. You may not like that comment, but to essentially accuse people and make borderline false statements to impugn their professional character, I don't appreciate it. And since you decided to come up here and do all this, I would like Terry, who has a lot of information, because she did look through your email, and she has some information to help you. Go for it.
Well, I don't want the public to have a distorted view of what we did as a committee. The two committees were made up of the superintendent, myself, Board Secretary Anna Briscoe at the time, Board Vice President and Finance Chair Lisa Zalinski, and our Building and Grounds Director Dave Rana. There is also a seven-page memo in the board pack outlining the timeline of the meetings, the activities of the committee, committees, and the rationale for the recommendation from the two committees. The two committees put in hours and days of work in the process of completing the work. The following 10 points of accusations call into question the integrity, honesty, and diligence of these two interconnected committees and the committee members individually. These accusations of conducting illegal activities, lack of complete transparency, and continued misleading of board members are made by Board Member Kelly McMillan. This type of accusatory behavior is degrading, demoralizing, and most importantly, creating a hostile work environment. We operate under the direction of the board, we put in a process for questions to be asked and answered, and we answer when the majority of questions are sent our way. In response to number one, the selection of the third lowest bidder, our clear justification was given and presented in the finance committee from the Committee on the Outsourced Custodian RFP Review. We have documented evidence that the two lower bidders were not responsive bidders for the district. This was discussed and vetted with the board attorney. The district is not exposed to any legal challenges. As far as post-bid modifications to the requirement, this is just simply false. There were no key criteria removed from the bid requirements for HIS. HES is furnishing new equipment, a dedicated truck was not in the RFP document. Legal concerns with bid scope changes. The board attorney was consulted in regards to the performance bond. There is a 60-day termination of convenience within the contract. A performance bond is not legally required for a custodian contract. New equipment was always part of the bid, new equipment will be provided by HES. The truck was never part of the RFP. Law on financial estimates. This, again, is false. The calculations are correct based on the financials of today. The staffing requirements are what is in the RFP. Stating the healthcare costs are inaccurate is also false. Mrs. McMillan has been part of the Insurance Committee to review the premiums, as well as submitting a FOIA request of the district for health insurance premiums. Additional workers' compensation, supplies, and fuel were addressed in the memo, as well as discussed at the Finance Committee meeting. Long-term cost implications. A five-year financial projection with in-house maintenance staff was presented to the Finance Committee as part of the final review of the O&M Fund 20. The projection shows a sustainable model. The annual wage increase was tied to the MTA contract with a fifth-year-only estimate at 3%. The estimated increase in cost was $60,000. Over the five-year projection, the fund balance decreased in in-house maintenance over a complete outsource was $300,000, which falls between the 17% and 33% fund balance expectation of the board policy for Fund 20. Unsubstantiated claims and CDL requirement issues. We have the ability to hire our own people for these positions, which will allow us to hire a specific skill set and to promote professional development to support district initiatives and preventative maintenance tasks. These staff will be directly reporting to our Director of Building and Grounds, which will give us greater control over what their day will look like. This rationale is a qualitative piece of the recommendation and review, which will be verifiable in performance reviews and job performances. Oversight of vendor compliance and background checks. Again, this accusation is false. We found the lack of background checks and took appropriate action. Lack of transparency and unwanted questions. The board members who served on the RFP for custodian contract are fulfilling the fiduciary duties of the board by participating and serving on the committee. They reviewed all proposals, interviewed the firms, and approved the final company. Their decision was part of the final recommendation from the second committee, the Superintendent's An-hoc Committee on Outsourcing. I also don't agree with incorrect miscalculations, and you said that they were our questions, which imply the entirety of the board feels in this way, but those questions were yours, Mrs. McMillan. And just going on, as far as this outsourced custodian, the process was thoroughly vetted by Mr. Fester. There were no post-bid modifications, the performance bid was removed during a contract negotiation with the apparent low bidder, compliance with applicable bidding laws. The process, again, was thoroughly vetted by the board attorney, Mr. Fester. And then there were just reiterations of the same things from above.
So again, thank you for all of our people that participated in that committee to come to a good conclusion for the betterment of our district. That being said, I would like to call the vote.
Can I respond to, to Dr. Shaw? She just responded to my email. I, I, this wasn't, this is the first I'm hearing of this, so this is inappropriate at best.
Hold on, timeout, timeout. You wrote a email, you wrote that whole email. She refuted all of your points. For you to say this is the first you're hearing about when you're the one that wrote the email, doesn't make any sense.
I'm, this is the first I've heard a response. No, this is the first that she's responding to my email, that anybody is responding to my email.
You made accusations against a member of this staff, unsubstantiated allegations.
There's no accusations in my email.
If anybody chooses to truly email FOIA, your emails and see it, they'll see exactly what was there.
Well, there's no accusations. I'm not accusing anybody of anything, I was asking questions...
She just read them back to you.
It's here.
I was asking questions about a matter before the board that the... the information that Terry Shaw just provided was not provided to the board before, just right now, before right now.
That's actually not true. That's why I didn't vote for those questions because we had all of those answers. That's why I chose to not vote for those questions.
And let's be clear, there is a difference between asking questions for information and making unsubstantiated allegations against our staff. One of those is appropriate. It's not the other one. She just replied to all of them in writing with the information. Okay, we're moving on. We are moving on. So that being said, I am going to call for the vote. Kelly Lynn, at your pleasure, please.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
No.
Mrs. Oost?
No.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes. Okay. Seven I, Mokina Park District Intergovernmental Agreement. I will do this one. I move to approve updated intergovernmental agreement between the Mokina Park District and the Mokina Board of Education as presented. Any questions, concerns, or otherwise? Let's go.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost? Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Seven J.
I move to approve the purchase of 530 new Chromebooks along with a three-year warranty, cases, and Google licenses for a total cost of $268,710 from Y and S Technologies as presented.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any questions, concerns, or otherwise? Good job. I like that. Anything? Let's go.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost? Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Okay. Items for the June 18th meeting will be forthcoming. Unless there's anything anybody would like to share in the room tonight. Yes?
We will have the, um, amended budget hearing.
Correct.
And then there will be, uh, uh, the summer painting projects will be listed for action, those two.
Wonderful. Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Thank you. Right, yeah, yeah. You mentioned that for information earlier. I, I wrote it down right before you. Yep, okay. That sounds great.
Jim, can we get a action item for the board to vote on recording the meetings?
No.
Why not?
Because you have to go information to action.
Well, he provided the information today, right?
It was information to us, not, I mean, um...
Is there even an action item necessary to record the meetings if there's no expenditure? Does it even need to be an action?
No one came here tonight to talk about that. It was merely to be shared and, uh...
This is the time when we're suggesting, I, I can suggest an action item for, or an agenda item for next. This isn't an action item. This is an agenda item for next. I'm sorry. What, I, we keep getting interrupted here. I wasn't done talking.
I'm listening to you. Go ahead.
I know, Sam just was talking.
Let's not, she's trying to help you.
I was just trying to help you. Go ahead.
I don't need help. Thank you. Um, what I'm suggesting is we add an agenda item for the board to address having Lincoln record the meetings at no cost, additional cost, and then, um, further discuss the next steps with potentially separately upgrading the A, the audiovisual, uh, in this room per the report that he provided today.
Well, I would need two things in order to consider that. One, I'd need the will of the board. Two, I saw Lincoln's report. Money aside, there were approximately eight people on any given time at the high end watching the live stream. Um, I, I don't think that's worthy of the district's money. Whether we're talking about 30 grand, 50 grand. Um, just putting that out there, the, the people watching at home, it's nice. I'm glad you have that option. Totally fine. But I'm trying to pay attention to taxpayer money and the idea of spending $30,000 to $50,000 on it. I, I, I don't know if a lot of people would be excited about that. We all got our property tax bills. If I ask 10 people, if I want all of their property taxes they were paying to school to go towards that project, I don't know if they'd agree with that, guys. That being said, if people would like to follow up and we can talk about putting it on for discussion next month, if it's the will of the group, we'll entertain it. Um, that, that's up to you guys, but I'm not going to put you all on the spot tonight. If people would like to do that, please follow up with me. If it's will of the board, we'll put it on for next month. I'm good with it. That's fine. Um, I just know it wasn't up for discussion. It wasn't listed separately, so it's not fair to put people on the spot tonight.
But it, just to be clear, there is no cost with recording the meeting and that's what I'm suggesting.
I, I am not, I'm not saying there is a, there isn't.
Oh, you said that the taxpayer dollars that you were just referencing with 30 to 50 grand? That is not what we're talking about here. Okay, I'm... What we're talking about here is zero cost and simply pressing record on the live stream, which is no cost. And the number of views, I understand the information that you provided was based on the live stream, but the really relevant, um, data is the number of views of the recordings that have been posted on YouTube, which are in the hundreds and they're consistently, you know, there's a lot of people that want that convenience. There's people that have written to the board asking for this. It is no cost. And we should discuss. I don't know why anybody would be opposed to doing that at no cost. What is the opposition like?
I, I'm, I'm going to table this for now because I appreciate you sharing your thoughts, but quite honestly, the idea that there is no cost, I don't know if that's true and I'm not going to comment on it. I know that Lincoln included a few things on his report regarding just microphones. Help me if I'm wrong, microphones alone, approximately 35 grand, give or take? Fair enough. Is that the will of our taxpayers to spend money for that on this when we are trying to put money in our classrooms? That is the existential question I have. Where do I want to put taxpayer money? Call me greedy. I don't want it to go in this room. I want it to go in the kids' classrooms. I want to support them. That's my personal opinion. If it is the will of the board, we can absolutely add to next month. Please follow up later. Thank you.
So Lincoln, is it any cost to record? We don't need buying microphones to record, right?
We are, we are not doing this right now.
We should, we should not be discussing this. This is not on the agenda.
Thank you, Eric.
No, 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 this is not on the agenda. Yes, you requested it to be on there. Jim and the super, the president and the superintendent do the agenda. They will put forth the agenda. You have an opportunity to do that, but you cannot ask him a question. It's not on the agenda. I know, neither one of you guys should be discussing this right now. It, it's, it's not on the agenda. You requested it to be on the agenda for next month. That's perfectly valid. Back and forth of questions is not valid. It's not on the agenda. So we need to move on.
That is on the agenda and that's what we're talking about.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay. Moving on, does anyone have something to share for the go to Mokina?
I would like to...
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to congratulate the alumni of Mokina School District that graduated this past weekend. And I would also like to congratulate our junior high students, eighth graders that will be graduating next week. Congratulations to all. Oh, wait, I'm not done. And Dr. Rollinaitis' last meeting.
I know.
Oh, he's coming next month? Okay, I'll wait till next month.
Okay, good.
Oh, wait. Steve's last meeting. Thank you.
Oh, it is Steve's.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, I'm back.
Thank you, Steve.
Well, I want to thank Megan and Stacy for the awesome Special Olympics that we had a couple of weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
It was put together so well and the kids had so much fun. It was so great. Thank you so much for doing that.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education adjourn to closed session for purposes of collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or the representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Uh, it is 8:50. We will, uh, start closed session in 10 minutes. Right, but I got to finish the motion with the time and then she seconded. Now we can vote. It's okay. Yeah, bud. Um, we will also be discussing matters regarding students. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting adjourned, closed session, 10 minutes. Thank you for your help, everybody. Good night.